Is there room to take your seats? If I could request that you and yourself, just like myself, can you please put the phone in use? To avoid disruption. There we go. Myself. I'll be the one that gets the phone call first. Okay. So, welcome to Vermont's 233rd Town Meeting Day. For those who don't know me, my name is John West. And I've had the privilege of being your town moderator for the past year. I'd like to thank you all for attending today. I'd also like to thank all the town officials, as well as everyone working today, for their service to the town. So let's cover the basics of the meeting, shall we? And I know we do it every year, but we'll do it this year as well. One, Robert's Rules of Order are the basic rules we'll be following for today's meeting, except where Vermont State law takes precedence. We, the body, cannot change state law, however, we can, with Robert's Rules, on a two-thirds vote, change if desired. An article must be moved and seconded by the body, then restated by myself before it's under consideration and open for debate slash discussion of the article. The person who made the motion to move the article has the right to speak first in the discussion, if desired. Articles may only have one amendment at any given time. We must finish with the current amendment first before motioning for another amendment. Once you have spoken on an article or amendment during the open discussion session, you will not be recognized again until all other voters have an opportunity to speak once. Robert's Rules only allows a speaker to speak twice on any given discussion part or motion and limits the duration to 10 minutes. All motions, remarks, and discussions must be addressed to the moderator. We'll do our best to recognize you in the order that you raised your hand. Please wait until recognized before you speak. When recognized, please stand if you're able to do so and speak in a clear, loud voice for everyone to hear your comments. Page one is in the books. We're getting close. Your comments, sorry. Your comments or speeches must be confined to the merits of the current discussions or article. You are not to engage with the person speaking before you, and please avoid anything that would be considered a personal attack or on a member of the body or their motives. Vermont State law prohibits consideration of any articles that have, sorry, that have not been warned. We cannot take any binding actions under the final article titled "other business." So when we get to the very end, we can't take any actions, more of discussion, nor can we amend a warned article or deal with business that has not been warned. Reconsideration of an article is allowed by Vermont State law up to the point we will begin working on the next article to reopen Article IV. What? Nope, I cut that off. Reconsideration. I put it in a whole nother paradigm. Open an article for reconsideration, whether it was voted down or passed, a person of the prevailing side would have to make a motion to reopen, to reopen it for consideration, again, before the next article is being worked on. If there is a concern, the moderator is not the ruling, that I'm not ruling properly or doing something out of order, please let us know. You have the right to challenge any of the rulings. Only registered voters in the town may vote at the Town Meeting Day. I ask, at this time, those who are not registered voters in the town of Bakersfield, to raise your hands now to be recognized. I can skip the second half since everyone's registered voters. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. We'll now have a moment of silence for reflection before we begin today's proceedings. And now, without further ado, onto the business of the day. Legal voters in the town of Bakersfield, Vermont, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Town House in the said town of Bakersfield on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. In the forenoon, consider and act on the following articles and vote by Australian ballot for Article II, which is to vote, which is to vote by Australian ballot for following officers and questions. Shall the town appropriate $425,000 for roadwork? Shall the town appropriate $362,000 for general expenses for the town? Select board member, three-year term. Select board member, a two-year term. Lister for three-year term. Auditor, one year of a three-year term. Auditor, two-year of a three-year term.
This is President, and these are here.
Auditor, three-year term.
The President, what?
No.
Planning Commission, three-year term.
Okay.
Planning Commission, two-year term.
Okay.
Oh, I reversed that. Planning Commission, three-year term. Planning Commission, three-year term. Planning Commission, two-year term. There's three of them, I apologize. Polls open at 10:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. The polls are now open.
I have something to say. Because we, I think I can be loud enough. Because it's a presidential primary year, you have to declare whether you want a Republican or Democrat ballot. That's why we have two checklists, just so everybody knows. It's once every four years, you pass into place.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Moving on, Article One. To elect the moderator for the ensuing year, are there any nominees for this position? Please state your name.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Stanley. I'd like to nominate John West.
Are there any other nominations for the position?
President.
Okay. Having said that, all those in favor of John West being moderator for the ensuing year, please say aye.
Aye.
And against? Say nay. The ayes have it? Thank you very much. As I said, Article Two is covered by the Australian ballot. We're going to move to Article Three. Article Three. To act on the reports of various town officers as contained in the current financial statement, please note, there is no actions to be done on these reports, they are just informational. Do I have, do I have a motion to move? Please state your name.
Joy Dome.
Yes. Move to accept, do I have a second?
Nikki Krip, the second.
Nikki Krip, the second. Thank you. So we have a, we have a motion to move, it's been made and seconded, regarding to act on the reports of various town officers as contained in the current financial statement. Again, please note, there are no actions on the reports, they are for your information. Kathy.
There's one correction that I know of. Linda, where are you?
Right here.
What page was it?
Page 28.
Okay. It's under this cemetery where it says we paid Ross Allen, we actually paid Maria DeRosa. So that's the correction.
So on page 28, we need to update who performed the function for the Town Cemetery Committee of mowing and such, and that should read Maria DeRosa. Is there any other discussion?
Would you repeat what you just said?
Yes. On page 28 of the town report, underneath, let me just find it.
Groundskeeping.
Groundskeeping. It states that, that it was done by the wrong person. It is Maria DeRosa who took care of the grounds for the cemetery last year, and that's who the month they did. Any other items for discussion? Or correction? No? It said that, we'll move on. Article Four. To elect the remaining town officers as required by law. Yes.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
The motion on the floor is to accept.
I apologize, you are correct. So, well, we have a motion from Kathy, well, we need a motion to accept the, I did that last year, too. Maybe next year I'll remember that. There's a motion on the floor to accept the town reports. Do I have a second?
It's not second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Town reports have been accepted, thank you. Article Four. To elect the remaining town officers as required by law. We'll take them one at a time. First off, do I have a motion to move for the nominations? Town officers? Anyone? I'm sorry? I'm just looking to move it. Yes. That's his first, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. And you are?
Senator.
Thank you, Senator. All right. So, we're looking for nominations for the first constable?
Yep.
Does anyone have a nomination for the first constable? No, no, we have no open, no nominations. We'll be post, I, I would like to postpone this then and move this to, yes.
Jim, is there a constable now?
We have, we have a gentleman who volunteered that we are trying to, trying to figure out insurance to cover him, and I'm not sure if he wants to proceed again.
Is he here?
No, but his spouse is.
That's nominate him.
That's why I'm looking at his spouse.
Nominate Chris Ward.
I have a nomination for Chris Ward as constable, for the town, first constable for the town of Bakersfield. Do I have any other nominations? That's LaRani Ward. I apologize, I know LaRani. We've been working together for a few years now. Any second nominations?
What we have here?
No. For all those in favor of Chris Ward being our first constable in town of Bakersfield, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Chris Ward is our first constable. Second constable, who works as dog catcher and such, which Chris has also come to do it. Do I have a nomination for second constable?
This is for Karen Ross.
No? No nominations? If there are no nominations, we'll be postponing this role indefinitely at this meeting, and the select board will try to find someone to fill the role. Thank you. I can see, collector of delinquent taxes, do I have a nomination? Collector of delinquent taxes.
Joy Dome, I nominate Kathy Westcomb.
Thank you, Joy. Are there any other nominations?
Paul Stanley, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Kathy Westcomb for collector of delinquent taxes, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, say nay. Here's the ayes have it, congratulations, Kathy. Moving on to our grand juror slot, do I have any nominations for the grand juror? And we actually have a definition this year. Lance, can you, can you provide, or Todd, provide a definition for grand juror?
The grand juror is responsible for inquiring into providing and providing information to the proper authorities of criminal offenses that may come to his or her knowledge that occur in the town of Bakersfield. This office is mostly obsolete. The state's attorneys provide most of the criminal investigations, enforcement, prosecution services and prosecution services in the local community, so largely a figurehead.
So, having known what the definition of a grand juror is, do we have any nominations for a grand juror?
Joy Dome, I nominate Jessica Villanue.
Jessica Villanue?
I second.
Are there any other nominations for grand juror? Having seen none, all those in favor of Jill Villanue for great, Jessica? Jessica Villanue, that quick? For grand juror, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
And against, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, congratulations for Jessica. Town agent, we'll go to Todd to give us the definition of town agent. Todd?
Role of the town agent is, the town agent plays a limited role in town government unless statutes provide that an agent can prosecute, which when sued must be elected, no statute provides that, and the independent authority to act. In fact, case law makes it clear that the town agent has no authority to originate suits in favor of the town or to settle for compromised suits in which the town has an interest. Instead, the agent's duties consist merely of assisting when litigation is in process.
Now that we know what the town agent does, does everyone hear that?
We look.
Perfect. Are there any nominations for town agent? Having seen none, we will be postponing this role as well indefinitely at this meeting, and the select board will try to find someone to fill that role. Moving on. We have a cemetery commissioner, five-year term. Do we have any nominations? Cemetery commissioner, five-year term? Okay. Again, if there are no nominations, we'll postpone this one as well indefinitely at this meeting, and we'll have the cemetery commission try to find someone to fill their role. Moving on. Cemetery commissioner, four years of a five-year term. Are there any nominees for a shorter term? Having seen none, we will also suspend this from today's meeting, and we will ask the cemetery commission to see if they can identify another individual for the role. Moving on. Library trustee, three-year term. Do I have any nominees? Michael Rourke? Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Having seen none, all those in favor of Michael Rourke for library trustee, three-year term, please state aye.
Aye.
Against, please state nay.
Sharon.
The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Congratulations, Michael. It's almost like deja vu because we have a second three-year term for the library trustee. Do we have a second nominee? Yes.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Katie Dorman.
Katie Dorman?
Yes.
Are there any other nominees? All those in favor of Katie Dorman filling the second library trustee, three-year term, please state aye.
Aye.
And against, please state nay. Congratulations, Katie. Trustee of public funds, three-year term. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Lance Lawyer.
Lance Lawyer, can you state your name, please?
Sharon Evans.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other nominations? No? All those in favor of Lance Lawyer being trustee of public funds for a three-year term, please state aye.
Aye.
And against, please state nay. Congratulations, Lance. All right, last one. Brigham Academy Committee Person, three-year term. Do I have any nominations for this position?
Is there someone in this position now?
That's a great question, let's ask Lance. Lance?
No, that's separate from what I'm doing.
No, no, is there someone in that position?
The members are Sarah Jo Willey, Markot, Nikki Krip, and Cheryl.
So Nikki, you're here, whose three-year term is up?
Sarah Jo.
If someone wants to nominate me, I agree to get it. I don't know exactly what.
Thank you.
Sarah Jo.
Yes.
Lance Lawyer, I'd like to nominate Sarah Jo Willey Markot.
I'll put a second.
I'll start here.
All those in favor, do I have any other nominations? All those in favor for Sarah Jo Markot, for Brigham Academy Committee Person, three-year term, please state aye.
Aye.
And against, please state nay. The ayes appear to have it, congratulations, Sarah Jo.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Could I speak to Brigham Academy at this point?
It's not exactly on our list, but if the, if someone wants to make a motion to break from the normal protocol?
I would make that motion. Jim, is there?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Having made, made and seconded, we'll give Paul Stanley a moment to speak over Brigham Academy.
And with Sarah Jo's comment on what Brigham Academy Group, we'll call it, does, with the activity of Brigham Academy in the wind here, I was involved with a committee a while ago that worked to try to get some activity going with Brigham Academy. This is like five, six years ago. Not to belittle anybody, but there was an extreme disconnect between the select board and that committee. That committee did a tremendous amount of work to try to get something going to renovate Brigham Academy. It fell apart, and hopefully, we could see more activity between this group that's working with Brigham Academy and the select board to get something going, to do something with Brigham Academy. So hopefully, that disconnect can get mended and get some working relationship between that group and the select board to get something moving with Brigham Academy. Thank you.
Yes, Sarah Jo.
Sarah Jo Markot. I don't know if the select board or anyone else has any information about the authority that this group has, but in my experience over the past couple of years, it's been hard to ascertain what kind of authority this group would have. I'm certainly interested in being proactive, I'm just not, I'm not sure who might be able to illuminate what, what we can actually do.
Lance Lawyer?
I'll turn my mic down for this one. In the past two years, I've been working with a grant with Northwest Regional Planning Commission, Franklin County Industrial Board, Preservation Trust, the select board, and a contractor who is interested in at least managing the project. We have acquired a grant of $45,000 for planning purposes. We're at the end of that grant, we're ready to move to the next phase. Franklin County Industrial Development Corp. also donated $10,000 towards this project. The contractor involved wishes at this point to remain anonymous. There will be an informational meeting here at 5:00, May 13th, as to how far we've come and what we can do to proceed. At present, I'm not supposed to divulge too much information, but it does involve some community space, and it involves somewhere south of...
That one goes, yeah, the president here.
Somewhere south of 20...
And the others over here.
Residential units.
Thank you, dear.
Okay. The difficulty has been, acquiring grants has been that people like the national parks, for instance, had a lot of money available for projects like this, however, they want to keep the structures mainly unchanged, and in order to put, you know, 16, 17, 18 residential units in this building, we're going to have to make some sacrifices to the interior. The exterior will remain largely as it is. Without divulging information that I've asked, keep my mouth shut about, I can't go much further, but please, come to this meeting, May 13th, at 5:00, we set aside here, in this building. We've set aside a two-hour block, and the representatives of the organizations that I spoke of earlier will be here as well. Thank you for your patience on this project.
Lance, if I may, it's also available online if they can't come physically. I believe Tammy will at least put it on the website if it's had our, our, their information for the meeting.
It's not a Friday.
Can I say it one more time?
It's not a Friday, the third is a Friday.
It's Monday night.
It's a Monday night.
I apologize. I don't know who had to come first. Go ahead, though, we wanted to talk to him shortly.
I was just wondering if there's anything this group can help Lance do before that.
It's a perfect set of questions. Go ahead.
So, I, I would just ask, as a member of this committee, that the select board would keep this group abreast of any information that we might be able to collaborate and support on, because if, if we're volunteering and stepping up for our civic duty, it would be great to be included and be proactive in that. Thank you.
When, when the muffler's been taken off my mouth, I'll share as much as I can.
From May 13th?
Yeah. Our plans, it's going to involve more town involvement. We're, we're going to need more town involvement, and it's going to take a lot of patience. Things have moved glacially slow, and it's been very frustrating. I apologize for that, but there isn't much that I can do about that. I apologize for that, but there isn't much that I can do about it.
Yes.
Can I ask who the, you said you're coming to the end of the grant? Who was that grant from?
Ultimately, Hut, Housing and Urban Development.
Are there any other points of discussion? Yes, please.
Hi, Carrie Decker. Have you signed like a non-disclosure agreement or something that you actually can't talk?
He has my word. Which is better.
It's not legal. I don't know. It just, there's a little uneasiness with so much being in secret and a committee that is supposed to be working towards this with them not knowing anything about it, it seems. It's very unnerving.
I guess. Yes, sir.
Paul Pickman. I agree with the comment this lady has made. When a project is granted in Utah, probably keep taxpayers in apprehension for any additional costs, then to hear the word "not allowed to speak", I guess the first thing I would say is, who is telling you that you are not allowed to speak about it?
In the past, when we've worked on this project, and Linda McCall can attest to this, it has caused such a discontinuity in the community that it has actually hindered any progress that we could make. These aren't written in stone. They will be up for the town review as a presentation on May 13, when we're ready and when we've covered as many bases as we can. We are trying to resent you with a package that is reasonable and fair to not only the townspeople, the taxpayers, and may I add that to date, this project has not cost taxpayers. It's a grant. We have in-kind services. All my services have been in, free. I haven't charged the town for my work on this project. And it's done a lot of work.
Could I ask, I wasn't, I was just giving him a chance. I would say thank you for your time, for sure. But at the earliest time of all time, to have a general outline of what, what the goal is, is the goal to, to become a community, because you're saying north or south of 20 units, things like that.
South of.
Big part.
South of.
Yeah, right. Anyway, it's all various at this point, and I think that as soon as you come out with goals, I would say. Myself, as a taxpayer, I, I would feel more inclined to support or not support, but I would be more inclined to be positive about contributing to the whole dialogue.
The form that will be on May 13? I apologize once again that you're not getting as much information as you feel you deserve. However, that's how it's going to stay until May 13.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
Jim, let's hear it. By state law, the only items that, that town bodies can keep quiet are when they go into executive session to discuss it. And it has to be because premature disclosure of that would have an adverse impact on town, the town's best interests. I don't think that keeping something quiet because it creates a stir in town is a legitimate excuse to keep things quiet. I mean, I understand you gave your word, Lance, but I don't know that you have the right to do that under these circumstances.
This is a, this is a planning grant, and it's just planning.
I understand.
There's no work.
It's town's business. It's, it, yes, that absolutely is. It's a grant given to the town of Bakersfield or to the Brigham Committee. So, sorry. You know, there, since, since there's money involved, federal money, that's taxpayer money, given to the town of Bakersfield, that that information is by state law, should be available to the taxpayers of Bakersfield in a timely manner. I mean, it's just like the meetings of the Select Board meeting, or the minutes of the Select Board meeting, or the minutes of this meeting, or any other meeting. You can have discussions about personnel issues. You can have discussions in private in executive session, personnel issues, contract issues, legal litigation, but it's a, it's a pretty narrow span of things that you can keep quiet.
I'm following the letter of the law as written, as presented in the grant. Our information, our public informational meeting is required in writing as part of this grant.
So the grant tells you that you should keep preliminary discussions secret?
No. No, that was a promise to the contract.
Well, as I said, I mean, I understand the position you're in, but I'm just saying that in the future, I don't think you're authorized to make that promise.
Hopefully, after May 13, I won't have to.
Well, but that's, that's neither here nor there. I don't think it's a good practice for officials of the town of Bakersfield to keep things private or secret that by law are required to be public, if asked.
Thank you. Kathy? No, I thought you had, it doesn't matter. Sharon, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that I know COVID derailed a lot of this, and, you know, as Lance said, it's been glacially slow. But am I wrong to say at one point in time, there was an informational meeting on record?
Yes.
And I'm assuming it was open to all of the people in this room?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kathy?
I was just going to say it's come May 13th is when they actually have a package they're going to prevent. So what you're not telling us is what they're thinking about. Is that it?
It's a planning stage.
It's a planning stage. There's nothing. There's nothing that any one person like you say, yeah, go ahead with because it has to go to a town vote?
No. This, this is going to be presented to the town, and we're looking for the town's opinion and input.
Okay, so after like the 13th, there's a presentation, and then somewhere along the line, the town will have to vote on stuff?
We're looking for feedback, yes. If I remember correctly, when the town of Bakersfield purchased Brigham from the school, we promised that any project that went forward would have to be approved by the voters of the town of Bakersfield.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, this is a really great discussion with money. If there was maybe another plan that we could continue more of this discussion?
At the end of the meeting, there's actually a slot for this. If there's two more members, is that okay? Yes.
Okay, so every Select Board meeting, there's a Brigham Update section. And in the minutes, like all grants that have been issued, money we're waiting to be reimbursed for, all that's in the minutes. So anything that's happened with money actually happened, that's in the minutes. It's public information. So it's online.
The only thing that I have kept from the town is the identity of the contractor.
Why is that?
Because he asked.
Does he have the right to ask?
I, I said, and actually, yes, sir.
Miller, when I, actually Tammy answered your question.
Okay, so you don't...
There's been information shared at Select Board meetings. You can attend those. You can watch those.
Three minutes online.
I'd like a motion to move this to the end of the meeting, right where it belongs, please.
One final comment, please, Mr. Moderator.
The man I'm speaking of isn't even necessarily taking the project. He has donated his time in advising us.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to move?
So move, Paul Stanley.
Second? All those in favor of moving this to the end of the meeting and moving on with Article 5, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you. Article 5, shall the town vote to have its property taxes due on October 7, 2024? Do I have a motion to move? We have to pay our taxes. Second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion's been moved and seconded. For Article 5, shall the town vote to have its property taxes due on October 7, 2024? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say nay. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 6, shall the town authorize the Select Board to set the tax rate to cover the expenses voted? Do I have a motion to move?
So, Jim, let's hear it.
Second? Brian Weston. Thank you, Brian. Motion's been moved and seconded. Shall the town authorize the Select Board to set a tax rate to cover expenses as voted? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say nay. The ayes have it. Moving to Article 7. Shall the town authorize the Select Board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes? Yes, sir. Second?
Second.
And your name against, sir?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. The motion's been moved, made and seconded. Shall the town authorize the Select Board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say nay. The ayes appear to have it. And the motion carries. Article 8. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the paving grant fund, which is a matching fund for grants? Do I have a motion to move? And a second?
Second.
Mr. Krip, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to move. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say nay. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Moving on to Article 9. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the bridge repair fund? Do I have a motion to move? Jim, thank you. Second it. Thank you, Alan. The motion's been made and seconded to move. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the bridge repair fund? All those in favor? Oh, discussion? I'm sorry. Jim?
I just have a quick question. Is there, what's the next in line of the greatest hits for bridges in town?
I believe it's in the whole, on the beginning, if you start from 108, heading west on Whitney Road. There's a big dip down there. That culvert is failing.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor for the town appropriate $10,000 for the bridge repair fund, say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Article 10. Shall the town appropriate $28,000 for the equipment repair fund? Do I have, Alan? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Jim, thank you. Shall the town appropriate, is there any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Carrie Decker. I guess I'm confused because we have it here as item 10, but when I look at page 11 in the report, there's nothing under the 24 budget. It's zero. Equipment repair on full year 24 budget, it says zero.
I think because it's a separate account. It's not part of the actual road amount that you put on the... Does that, I don't know how you guys do it. That's what I'm asking.
Lance, Paul?
I believe it's part of, it's a separate amount of money that isn't part of the fund that we've already put in the general budget, so to speak, for the road crews. So it's separate money that comes, has to be voted in before it can be put in there. And that's the way it's been done year after year, as far as I know.
I'm trying to remember that. We have, we voted as a board to maintain a certain amount in the equipment repair fund, and we request that amount to fill a big bank, so to say.
For the last two years, you haven't requested any or used any because 2022 and 2023, there's nothing in there.
Big J, that's it. Big J shows what we use.
Right, but shouldn't that follow through so I can read across on page 11? Because it says in 2020, there's the over 3,000, and then it jumped up in 2021 to 24,000, and then there's nothing in 2022 and 2023. I thought I should be able to read across that so that I could see the trend over time.
Moderator? Yes, sir.
Phil Irwin, on page 21, there's a separate section called equipment repair fund.
Thank you.
It's in the road account.
So can you tell me the numbers why in there, so it makes sense to me like?
So last year, we appropriated $26,050 for equipment repairs that was voted on in last year's meeting.
And then how about in the 2022?
That was the... That was the 2022.
Okay, so I'm writing in $26,000 underneath the 2022, and how about underneath that 2023?
Right.
Yes.
So the 2023 would go there? Okay, thank you for explaining.
Any other items for discussion?
I have just one quick question again. What's next to be replaced? What are we looking at?
This is for repairing trucks, the three trucks, the grader. We still have two graders. The bucket loader, tractor, and, yeah, and our excavator.
Any other items for discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. Shall the town appropriate $28,000 for the equipment repair fund? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, and they do. The Article 10 will carry. Article 11. Shall the town appropriate $49,485.70 for the Brigham, HF Brigham Library for 2025? Yes, Bill?
Phil Irwin, so move.
Do I have a second? Sarah Jo, any, anyone for discussion? Okay. Hey, he's trying to get into the democratic process. Don't, don't start him. Thank you. The item has been, the motion's been made and seconded to move. Article 11, shall the town appropriate $49,485.70 for the HF Brigham Library for the 2025 year? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 11 carries. Article 12. Shall the town appropriate $15,000 for the Maple Grove Cemetery for the year 2025?
So Linda McCall?
Linda McCall, second. Do I have a second?
Ann, will you say that? I second that.
Thank you. Ann, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Could we please amend that to Cook Cemetery? It's the responsibility of Cemetery Commission to take care and maintain towns' cemeteries, including Cook Cemetery.
I have a request for amendment.
Second it.
Second it to amend?
What was the amendment amount?
To add, it's the same amount. It's just changing the verbiage to add Cook Cemetery?
Yes.
To the, to the list, the user.
Can we do that? Can we add?
We can, we, what, I mean, is that implied?
I guess I don't understand, but, you know, I know.
I know that I know that the documents are supposed to be as presented, the one document.
It's the responsibility of Bakersfield Cemetery Commission to take care of Bakersfield Cemeteries.
Right.
Maple Grove Cemetery over here is one cemetery. Cook Cemetery is the other cemetery.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
So if you look to, you'll see under General Fund where the town has been paying for the maintenance of Cook Cemetery. That should fall under the Cemetery Commission.
Oh, okay. I mean, that's, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to this. I'm just wondering if you...
You can give us more money if you like to.
I don't have.
Linda? You dress, you dress up here, that's all.
I just...
I understand your explanation. I got it.
You got it?
Yeah, I got it. Lance?
I just would like to stay ahead rather than go through trying to change it this year. Next year, we'll make sure it's written correctly.
Just to say the cemeteries.
Yep. The Maple Grove and Cook Cemeteries.
I don't think it's going into a general fund for the cemetery. It's really where it lines up.
Right.
No, it doesn't.
So you split that?
This goes into the Cemetery Commission.
That's what I mean. It's going into your general cemetery fund. I should have used the word cemetery in there. I wasn't talking the general fund. I'm talking the budget for the cemetery. But where that money is dispersed within there is the Cemetery Commission's responsibility. Yes?
If the money is earmarked for Maple Grove Cemetery and we vote it that way, they cannot spend it on the Cook Cemetery. Unless we change it to say the Maple Grove Cemetery and the Cook Cemetery, they can only spend it where it was voted to go.
The concern is what Jim brought up, which is we're not really allowed to change how it's worn. And it's only, it's not an amount at least, but still, we can suspend, we're off, yes.
We've done it before when people had issues with the way the, I think it was the paving grant fund or the new equipment account or whatever fund we edited the name.
We as a body are voting on this and we can amend it to give money to whomever we want to give money to. We can reduce it. We can change the way it is. The request was made by the select board, yes? Where you requested that amount by the Cemetery Association?
That is correct.
So if the Cemetery Association made the request, and they are now requesting to change that, they are perfectly within their rights to do that under Robert's rule.
It's a two-thirds, it's required for two-thirds for the amendment, I believe.
Okay, the other here. Thank you, dear.
Anne, Linda's Anne. Well, we haven't put it through an amendment yet.
No, but there was still a request and a second.
So. To amend. We're going to require two-thirds of the group to agree to amend. Yes, sir.
I have a question on this amendment.
Yes, sir.
I was one of the ones that originally started cleaning out the cemetery back in the late 80s, early 90s. At that time, it was a private cemetery. And later on, in the late 90s, ancient cemetery, which was a commission in the state of Vermont somewhere, down in Montclair, that maintains that the towns have to maintain cemeteries that are not taken care of. And back then, as a select board, we started putting $500 a year towards this cemetery. But my question is, before you attach it to the town cemetery, someone should verify if this is a private cemetery or a town cemetery.
The cemetery has documentation that says that they, the commission is in charge of Maple Grove and Cook Cemetery.
But that was a private cemetery.
Back to the request to amend, I have a motion to amend.
She made, and seconded.
And just explaining the process. Then I need, we need to put it to vote. That will put the majority is required to, to change this to include Cook Cemetery. So I'm looking for a majority vote. All those in favor to amend the article, let me just go find it, Article 12 to read. Shall the town appropriate $15,000 for Maple Grove and Cook Cemeteries for the 2025 year? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay? Okay. That is definitely the majority, thank you all. Going back to the original move motion that has been amended. Shall the town appropriate $15,000 for Maple Grove and Cook Cemeteries for 2025? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, nay? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 12, as amended, thus carries.
Just a clarification, Paul Stanley, where is the Cook Cemetery?
East Bakersfield.
Out of East Bakersfield, okay.
Just right on the corner of Wychgat Hall and Town Road Trail.
Yep, okay.
All right, moving on to Article 13. Shall the town appropriate $5,000 for Bakerfield Historical Society for 2025? Do I have a motion to move?
So move.
Thank you, and second it? And you are? Wendy Cobb, thank you. Okay, so the motion's been, the article has been moved and seconded, made and seconded to move. Shall the town appropriate $5,000 for the Bakerfield Historical Society for 2025? All those in favor, yes, discussion?
No, we're voting, okay, gotcha.
No, no. Any discussion? No, okay. Put it into the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, nay? Okay, the ayes appear to have it, and they do, Article 13 carries. Article 14. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 to the reappraisal fund? Do I have a motion to move? So moved by Brian Westrum, and a second? Seconded by Nikki Krip. So the, the article has been, has been moved. Article 14, shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the reappraisal fund? Is there any discussion? Yes, sir?
I'd like to know what that means. Paul Pickman, what, what do they do with that $10,000?
The $10,000 is literally going to a company that needs to be hired to reappraise the structures in the town of Bakersfield off the grand list.
It's mandated, right? Lance, mandated by the state.
Yes, it is mandated by the state law, sorry.
Any, any other discussion? I think Kathy had her hand up. Paul?
Has this company been secured? Because there's reports that we can't find people to do these reappraisals throughout the state of Vermont.
Definitely.
And just wondering if that company has been secured to do the reappraisal.
Kathy?
Not yet, but we have someone that has put in a bid. Or is at least working with the listers on what needs to be done to put in a bid.
Okay.
So you're having your hand up in the back?
I'm a cat. When's the town going to do a reappraisal?
Why does the town go to do the reappraisal? We're trying to schedule it. I, it shouldn't be answered, but we're trying to schedule it.
It's trying to be scheduled for later this year. We're, we're behind, like every other town is right now, on our reappraisal. So it's important that we get this done so we don't lose those school funds that kind of.
Right.
So that's, that's what this $10,000 is going to.
Kathy?
Because it's going to cost upward of $70,000 to get it done.
Yeah, it's going to cost roughly $70,000 to get it done, is what Kathy said.
If you could save a few bucks by not repraising my house.
I agree completely. Any other discussion on the town reappraisal fund? Having seen none, we'll move forward with the vote. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 to the reappraisal fund? All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And against, no? Switched it up, see? That carries, it appears to pass, and it does. Article 14. Article 15, shall the town appropriate $4,000 for fireworks for the annual 4th of July celebration needs? Sandra, do I have a second?
Lance? Lawyer, second.
Thank you. The Article 15, shall the town appropriate $4,000 for the fireworks for the annual 4th of July celebration needs? Any discussion?
Moderator, just an update on the plans. We're moving forward with doing the event on, it's the Saturday after, the 4th, I believe it's the 6th. Dave Stetson with, with Tim Cath. Sound, which did the sound here today.
Hey, I'll teach you.
And just be aware, those folks treat us really well. So they're set to do the sound. The fireworks are in place, and I believe Michael O'Rourke is in place. Did he hear? Yes. Not to volunteer you, Mike, but is in place to do the parade. So, and pray for good weather.
Paul, you miscomplete the facilities. Are they set up?
The facilities.
Have they been reserved?
The porta potties, yes. We're going to get that situated.
That's it. Any other items of discussion for the 4th of July celebration? No? Having seen none, we're going to move to the vote. Article 15, shall the town appropriate $4,000 for the fireworks for the annual 4th of July celebration needs? All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And against, please state no? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 15 carries. Article 16, shall the town vote to exempt Bakersfield Fire, Bakersfield Fire Volunteer Fire Department?
That was too many fires.
Started on that one. Anyhow, from property tax located at 181, let me go back to the beginning, I apologize. Article 16, shall the town vote to exempt Bakersfield's Volunteer Fire Department from property tax located at 181 Main Street North for a period of five years beginning April 1st, 2024? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Sam, thank you, second it?
We'll be getting seconded.
Thank you. The, the article has been moved. And motion made and seconded. Shall the town vote to exempt Bakersfield Volunteer Fire Department from property tax located at 181 Main Street North for a period of five years beginning April 1st, 2024? Is there any discussion?
I just want to say they're already exempt, this just has to be done every five years.
Any other discussion?
Thank you for Sue Sonski to bring that to our attention, so he gets you.
Thank you. So we'll move it to a vote. Article 16, shall the town vote to exempt Bakersfield Volunteer Fire Department from property tax located at 181 Main Street North for a period of five years beginning April 1st, 2024? All those, all those agree, please say aye.
Aye.
And against, please say no? The ayes appear to have it, and they do, Article 16 carries. Article 17. Shall the voters exempt Fairfield's Fire District Number One Water and Reservoir Building from property taxes under 32V, period S, period A, 3832, paragraph J, for a period of five years starting April 1st, 2024? Looking for a motion? Sam, thank you. Obie?
Second.
Thank you. The article has been moved, so move. Kathy?
Same thing I said before.
Thank you, Kathy, it's a ditto. That, that's, there are any exempt, we're.
Can be five years.
Every five years, we just go back and go. Okay, so Article 17, shall the voter, any other discussion? I didn't see any hands, but thank you. Shall the voters exempt Fairfield's Fire District Number One Water and Reservoir Building from property taxes under 32V, S, A, 3832, paragraph J, for a period of five years starting April 1st, 2024? All those in agreement, please say aye.
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 And against, say nay? Guys, yes, sir? Yes, sir.
Is that Fairfield's?
That's Fairfield's Fire District.
They're buildings in Bakersfield.
The building sits on.
We don't have to do our own?
We did the fire, the volunteer fire department, or you said?
Fire District's separate.
Yeah.
I, I have no idea, do you have, have to see. Do you keep track of them?
Thank you, Alan.
Probably coming up.
Yes!
That property is changed when they change the town line. And the town of Fairfield allows all the children that go to BFA to ride their bus free. So it's kind of one hand washing the other.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. I don't think I put this to a vote, I apologize. All those in agreement for the town, the voters to exempt Fairfield's?
You did.
I did. So voted, okay. Little out there, 18. I heard it. So 18, shall the town appropriate the following sums of money? Article, can we move the entire piece, 18, so that we can do them?
You might as well pull them in everybody else.
We understand that you can separate pieces if you want to by amending. I would like to make the amendment that we vote Article 18 as a block.
Oh.
Okay, there's been a, a request to vote 18 as a block. Do I have a second? I have a motion to amend. One second. Thank you, sir, so we have a motion made and seconded to to change Article 18 and vote it as a block versus individual items. All those, any discussion? Jim?
Gentlemen, here. I, I would really think that we would want to go through these line item by line item. I mean, these are very different organizations. It just seems that, you know, there's, there's a couple here that I haven't seen before.
You can amend to.
Well, yes, I under, I understand that, but, I mean, we need to have somebody describe, you know, what each of these organizations does, so we're going to be going through them anyway. So I would suggest that we go through them item by item.
So have a motion to amend? If it passes, then we're going to vote as a block. If it fails, then we'll go individual items. So those all in favor to vote this as a block, please raise your hand.
Oh, well, there's more, they keep popping them up.
All those against, please raise your hand? You raised your hand late, now I gotta get that. I saw that. I have 25, that's it.
Okay, so someone else raised again?
Yeah, someone else said afterwards, I think. Should we just do paper vote?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move to a paper vote. I apologize.
Do you need to suspend foul and exonerate?
Yes. We, Sammy? We're just going to use these?
Yeah.
All right, so after these two people vote, we will suspend now, for a moment, we'll put this to a paper vote.
Thank you, dear. Are you having trouble hearing two? Terrible. This is a crowd, I have to go.
Yes. Right. Yes.
Yes to amend, no, no to. No to keep them separate. And I'll put that on. All right, there's paper being circulated. You would vote yes to amend, no to keep them separate. That's yes to amend and no to keep them separate, thank you. Wait, we put the box over here.
It's not good place for it, we're putting her.
What can I watch?
Hurry, hurry, I don't feel it. No. No, there's a lot here. It's been taken down, it must be.
Yeah.
Oh wow.
Phil just finished it and give me the key back.
I can only stay for one year, and, um, what's that? Because my term is all up.
Oh, so we re-vote.
No, I can't run anymore, apparently.
It's a great idea. When Teddy sold that building, it was the joy of my life.
It wasn't on mine, though, by the way.
That was the best job we ever did.
How you doing?
I like your tone, man.
Which one? Oh, that's your phrase.
Yeah.
They can leave me right where I am, I'd be fine with that.
Let's take a walk, we'll stretch our legs. Can you come with me? Hi, guys.
Has everyone had a chance to vote?
Busy, but he's a busy boy. I told him, I told him, he can't come outside and get his answer.
Guys.
And I give him the chair, he says.
I won't be interrupting discussions, we just wanna continue the process. Has everyone had an opportunity to vote? Alright, we'll count the votes, Lance? End time, not to a full time.
Empty?
Other time.
Stop?
There you go. Empty now.
What's your last name, Tom? What's your last name? Your? It's Griffin or Gill. The last name is Gill.
Alright, we're gonna return to the meeting, thank you. The written ballots state that there were thirty-two yeses to amend this as a block, to deliver this as a block. There were thirty noes. So the yeses have it. So we will move Article eighteen and vote it as a block again this year, as we did last year. Article eighteen, shall the town appropriate the following sums of money? Two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for the Franklin County Home Health. One thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars for Northwest Vermont Solid Waste District. Two hundred for the Franklin County Industrial Corporation. One thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. Six hundred dollars for the Mississauga River Basin Association. Did I say that right, Lance? Mississauga. Mississauga. Mississauga, right? For the River Basin Association. Five hundred dollars for the American Red Cross. One hundred dollars for Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force. One thousand dollars for the Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Fund. Five hundred dollars for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County. One thousand dollars for Lori's House of St. Albans. And ninety-five dollars for the Vermont Center for In- Really, ninety-five dollars? Ninety-five dollars for the Vermont Center for Independent Living. I'm opening the floor to discussion, to Jim's point. You wanna ask about one, you wanna ask about all? Jim?
I've got a general question on this. When, when these items come, when people come, come to the select board and say, we wanna put this in there, is there any vetting process done? I mean, is there any requirement for them providing an audit? I mean, are there paid staff? Um, if... In the past, we have required both a written report and, thank you. And a representative. Uh, not all of these organizations have sent a representative this year. I understand, but it would be nice if they would, could provide evidence of a professional audit within the last three years or four years, or even have one done at one time. And if there was somewhere, someplace we could go, where we could see if there was paid staff, if there was paid staff or their budget, you know, how this relates. I mean, I'm just looking at, I mean, Cat Crusaders. I mean, what the hell's that? But I'm just, I, I, I don't, I don't need to know. But I'm just, but I'm just saying, we don't, we don't...
Please, keep the discussions up there.
But some of these, we don't know what it is, and there's no place to go. I mean, this also ties to the lack of notification for town meeting. We used to get the reports mailed to us. Now, we don't get them, we don't even get a notification that they're available. Um, I mean, it, it would be nice to have some more information when we're spending taxpayer money. To answer your question, uh...
Can you sit down? Sit down, we'll look inside and see.
Thought you were talking to me. I'm sorry, where was I? Yeah. I, i- in the back of the
Yep.
Report, uh, there are reports on most of them.
Thank you.
They're not of, of the same quality, certainly. Some of them provide some financial report. It is not required, we are familiar with these organizations, uh, as a whole, including Cat Crusaders. Uh, they're a legitimate organization. No, they did not provide us a financial report, and that might be something that we need to consider in the future. And, and that's just my point, is that, you know, going forward, this is not a group system, is what this is. But I think we need to pull us going forward to have a set criteria that anyone bringing these items up has to meet. You know, whatever it is, whether it's just to provide basic financial information, a budget, staff, or, you know, evidence of an audit. Uh, certainly, most, uh, nonprofits should be having audits done every three years, at a minimum. So I think, if you would like, actually, I would briefly explain my experience with some of these organizations, if that would make you comfortable.
Lance, why don't you just do that? Just go over each organization, since we're talking about voting as a block.
There's just one thing that I wanna make known as well. There were a lot of other requests that came in that we did not put into this because of the vetting process that we were using.
Like, is there, is there?
Are you voting as a block?
Yes.
I think it needs a paper vote.
We will, thank you. Lance, go, go through each organization.
If they, yeah, they came in without any letter, they just went to the pile.
Franklin County Home Health, we all know this organization. And we all know people that is helped. It is very worthwhile, in my opinion. And I'm, I'm just gonna go down and make quick comments. Um, Northwest Solid Waste District, these are the folks that take care of our, maintain the dump site down at the north end of town. This is on a capita basis, and I think that's a fair price. I mean, considering, uh, what they do for us. Uh, Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation, they were instrumental in giving us ten thousand dollars toward this, uh, Brigham project that I've been working on. So a return of two hundred from us, pretty cheap. Northwest Regional Planning Commission, uh, I have worked closely with Northwest Regional Planning Commission, Kathy LaVoy, in, in relation with this Brigham project. They have provided us with far more than fifteen thousand dollars worth of, uh, work, advice, and everything. They're required as part of the grant to do, uh, two thousand dollars worth of in-kind work. So in that one project alone, uh, they've, uh, more.
Lance, that was fifteen hundred. Fifteen hundred. I'm sorry, I'm scaring you fifteen thousand.
Fifteen. I apologize.
It's okay.
Mississauga River Basin Association, uh, they are very instrumental in maintaining clean water waste. For six hundred dollars. Wow. American Red Cross, well, we haven't been in need of their services in a while, but if we do, five hundred dollars is gonna be cheap. Uh, we've already had a couple instances in town where, uh, we've been close to needing it, the storm of nineteen. Uh, there was some assistance from Red Cross then. Uh, the Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force, that's the organization that maintains the dry hydrants in the Brooks. For when we have a fire, they have a readily available source of water. They install and maintain these for a hundred dollars, cheap enough. Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Fund.
I have a comment.
Sign it.
Uh, on the Lucas J. Williams Memorial Fund area, I was told I'd be arrested if I ever went on that property again because I complained about the loud music that goes on all of July and August. My property is adjacent to that. I've spoken to other neighbors who say they've complained about it multiple times, and nothing has been done. And when I went over and complained about it, I, um, sure, she'd crank the music up the next day. You have to be in your house with the windows closed in the summer if you don't wanna hear that amplified pounding music. And, you know, just being told that I'd be arrested for going on that property, I don't think the town should give her anything. That's what I say on that.
On the other side of the coin, they provide multiple youth programs. Also maintain food shelves. One of the organizations that did not request this year was the Fairfield Center, Community Center. You'll notice that they're missing, they did not put in a request this year. Uh, Cat Crusaders, five hundred dollars. Uh, they spay, and they, they neuter animals for free. Providing, uh, safe shelter for the animals. Lori's House at St. Albans instrumental in helping the young women, Alwens, excuse me, who are in need of help for multiple reasons. Ninety-five dollars for the Center for Independent Living. Uh, that's helping our elderly folk in town, making sure that they have a comfortable life wherever they are.
Hang on a minute, Jim, cause you ready to go on? Anyone else with discussion? Yes?
I have a question. Years past, I wanted your money for the update. There's any others?
There was no request.
Yes?
I just wanted to comment on the lack of request from Fairfield Community Center. I'm not sure why they didn't request. Hopefully, it's just because they didn't need the money. Um, I appreciate, because it's so needy to just, we've asked them, if we don't ask them, they're not gonna give us money next year. But by not asking, I feel like they're respecting the budget and means, and I hope we're fully prepared to give it to them next year if it is arising again.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm not moving.
Sarah Jo Markin, I would just like to speak, um, in support of the Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Fund. I've donated hundreds of hours rebuilding a website for the foundation, um, over the last couple of months. If anyone can visit it at ljwmemorial.org. Um, and it has just reminded me how much selfless work this organization has given, not only to Bakersfield, um, to the community, to young people and people of all ages, but to our surrounding community as well. Literally thousands of young people impacted. Um, Rosalie had hundreds of that, of kids from the after-school program throughout the summer. Kids who, um, you know, you can watch videos on the website of just the incredible impact of being able to be in community, to be outside, to have a safe place, to play and interact, and access food, and access, um, you know, safe, healthy entertainment and recreation. And, um, I just, she's now impacting a, a third generation of families. So I would just put my support in for that organization.
I don't see any else here, I'm just checking. Go ahead, sorry.
Um, I just have a quick question. You said the Lucas Williams Fund runs a food shelf?
Yes.
Where do they do that? Out of the Right, that, that property. Out of the side down here.
They still do it, I haven't seen it for a while.
Uh, to my knowledge, they do. Sarah Jo, could you speak to that?
I just, I know for sure that they put food boxes together during the holiday times. I'm, I can't speak directly about other schedules.
Yeah.
I have seen it, I go by it every day.
Used to be a big one of cars there all the time, getting boxes of food, but you don't see that anymore.
Any other items for discussion? Yes?
Um, what do you call? Um, I just wanna be clear on what the Cat Crusaders of Franklin County does. Um, they spay and neuter, uh, cats that are barn cats, stray cats. Not like, you know, you bring in your cat for free, and that's how that works. But they, they go all over the county, they have all sorts of fundraisers during the summer, and, uh, they're a good thing to have.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? It has been requested. I think it's a good idea to put this also to a paper vote, because I think it's going to be close. So, why don't we go to a paper vote? We're going to box everything up again, and we'll do this process all the time. And that is Article 18. Shall the town appropriate the following sums of money? A $2,776 for Franklin County Home Health. $1,655 for Norton West for Mont Solid Waste District. $200 for Franklin County Industrial Development Corp. $1,521 for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. $600 for the Mississauga River Basin Association. $500 for the American Red Cross. $100 for Vermont Rural Fire Protection. Guys, just one note. Can we hold the discussion until we're to the article, please? $100 for Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force. $1,000 for Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Fund. $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County. $1,000 for Laurie's House of St. Albans. $95 for Vermont Center for Independent Living. This is paper ballot.
This is it?
Are you one of those called it up here? Makes me mad. I'm going to put my name on that list next year. I'm going to put my name on that list next year to go give it all away.
To see what your property taxes, to see how much your property taxes go up.
I'm 89 and I'm a widow.
Yep.
I don't ask for money out of where I'm housing together.
No, it's okay.
Hi. I miss you, you know. Help everybody, okay? Okay, here, now.
Going well, yourself? Get this clear right there.
Yes.
She wears a shirt.
A long time ago.
Has everyone had an opportunity to vote? Is there anyone left who has not voted who wishes to do so? Raise your hand. Well, go move to the couch.
Where'd you go?
Oh, looking on poker glass. I said, don't leave the building. You can't go there. You can't leave the building. You won't leave the building. I do. Every year. I go, I own Elka there every year. Yeah. What's up? Yeah. That's a cool town, Red River. Oh, it's wicked cool. Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's not far from, not far from the Colorado border. It's a cool town. All kinds of stuff going on here. Yeah. It's like an old western town. Tal, well, Talus isn't far from me. No, because you go just a little ways, you go into Questa, and Talus is like, I don't know, 18, 19 miles from Questa. Yeah. Yeah, I've been going there the last 15 years. Yeah.
Article 18. Shall the town appropriate the following sums of money? I'm going to skip the dollar amounts. We've done it a few times, but I'll go over the organizations for Franklin County Home Health. Northwest Mont Solid Waste District. Franklin County Industrial Development Corp. Northwest Regional Planning Commission. The Mississauga River Basin Association. American Red Cross. The Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force. The Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Fund. Cat Crusaders of Franklin County. Laurie's House of St. Albans. And the Vermont Center for the Independent Living. This was an amended motion to vote these as a block, and the votes went to paper ballot, which is as such. There were 45 yeses or yays, and 13 nays. The motion carries. The article carries. All associations will receive the funds. Moving on to Article 19, which is the last article for the day. Article 19 is, Bill? Oh, okay, I got you. Article 19 is to do any other business that can be properly transacted at this time. Bill?
Thank you. Bill Erwin, I'm Chair of the Planning Committee.
Can we move, can we move it first? Is there not making motion to move?
You don't have to move anything.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second by four. Go ahead, Bill. Move it there.
Can everybody hear me right?
Yeah.
So, this year, between now and next town meeting day, the Planning Commission will be working with Northwest Regional Planning Commission to amend our town plan. And will very likely use that as a stepping stone to amending the town bylaws. If you have an interest in making your voice heard relative to our town plan, relative to our bylaws, please look at the town website, see when we're meeting. It is usually the first Monday evening of the month. Sometimes we have to move it to the third because it's a holiday or something. But it's either the first or third Monday at 7:00 here. And we really appreciate townspeople talking about the things that are of interest to them, what they want to protect in our town, what they would like to maybe restore in our town, maybe to build new in our town. We do that planning through the town plan, and we restrict the kind of work that we explain in that town plan through those bylaws. So, please do make an effort if you want to join us for that. And we do televise all of that.
Kathy?
So, every monthly meeting, are you going to be discussing this, or only on the meetings where you don't have hearings for subdivisions and such?
Once we get started, we will probably talk about it every meeting until it gets done. And we're likely to start that process soon after.
Is that town that's in any case?
Yes.
Sorry, Bill. Go ahead. Lance?
Bill, will you be working on the town hazard mitigation plan along with this?
Yes. It's part of the town plan.
Jim?
I make a suggestion that town, various town boards use Front Port Forum to notify people about upcoming and keep a drumbeat up of the information for that. That's a really good resource. You can post there for free. I would also like to suggest that the town try to develop an email list of people in town that you can send out an email to, you know, ward town meeting, you can send out an email for that. I mean, once it's set up, it's a fairly simple process to just type a few sentences in, and people notice it. I mean, I'm really concerned about the participation we're seeing from the town. I mean, all I'm seeing is a bunch of old farts in here that look like me. You know? And it's a dwindling, and it's a dwindling, it's a dwindling number. There's a few young people here, but I don't think there's been enough of an effort to reach out to the young people that live in this town that have moved here. And I think I would like to see more of an effort to do that.
If I may, Jim, the one source that has 99% of all this is the town website. We actually have all the meetings warned out there, so you can find them.
Oh, I understand that.
And also, there's a link, so we record every select board meeting, except for one I didn't hit the record button on. But we record every select board meeting and every Planning Commission meeting. So, you can, you won't, you can either join live to the link that's on the website, or if you can't make it, you can at least watch what happened.
Oh, I understand that, because then people will know about that.
Right.
So, you notify them, and you have to keep, you have to keep notifying if there was a town newsletter or just an email that could be sent off by the various towns.
Absolutely.
I wish there's some way in our community that social-type events and information other than government stuff could be published or aired or something. There's no way to promote things in our town, to spread the news. I'm just voicing here, there isn't need, I feel.
I agree.
Yes?
Carrie Fleeter, thank you. So, I would just encourage maybe the use of social media or other things that are what a younger generation is more apt to use versus a website, because that's really not what a younger generation is using. Also, to move to the topic of Brigham Academy, if you go to the Franklin County Industrial Development Corp website, you will see that they have regional priorities projects. And the Brigham Academy conversion is number four on their list out of four. And it says that it is currently being evaluated, evaluated, excuse me, by a private developer to convert the space to senior housing. And this would be a huge project for Bakersfield and surrounding communities. Architectural plans have been completed. In 2020, Bakersfield successfully applied for a community development block grant to partially fund the planning phase. Additional funding sources are being considered with this Franklin County Industrial Development Corp planning technical assistance, as well as 15,000 in financial support. So, it seems like things are a little bit further along. So, I'm really curious about where the money will be coming from to convert Brigham to senior housing.
That's where we're at now. We're looking... Sorry. That's where we're at now. We're looking for funds, investors, grants, all of the above. And it's a slow process. I thought that when I took on this project a couple, three years ago, that it would move a lot faster. And that has been my biggest frustration, is how glacially slow things are going with this. And it is... I don't know what to tell you. It is moving forward. We are making progress, and that's the good part. I've got, I came out of a meeting about a month ago, and it was the first time that I actually felt good about the project. The architectural plans were just finished the last couple of weeks. That was the last big meeting we had. We walk the actual architects through the structure, and...
So, is there an estimated cost with those plans currently?
Somewhere between $3 and $4 million. There is no hard figure attached to this project, yeah. But those, that's an estimate. And tax credits, between federal and state, we're hopeful of somewhere between $900,000 and $1 million from tax credits. So, that's a good start.
Still leaves a few million dollars for tax payers.
Oh, no, that, we're not looking to fund this project through taxes with Shadow Baker Service. That is one thing that I've told them right upfront, that we cannot, a community our size cannot support a project of this scope. This isn't a school. I mean, if we had to rebuild, God forbid, our grade school, we could, we would do it. We'd have to. But for a project like this, I have told them right upfront, you can't ask that of the town of Bakersfield.
Anything else, Burrito? Kathy had her hand up in Brigham?
So, I'm okay. Is this meeting on May 13th where most of these questions that are being asked right now will be answered?
It is my hope, yes. I can't guarantee that all your questions will be asked.
But like, where, find the money and that type of stuff, is that going to be answered on this meeting?
That will be discussed, yes.
Jim? I just, the company I work for does a lot of work, transportation work for various nonprofits all across Vermont and New Hampshire, and some in Western Massachusetts. And there's a tremendous amount of money available for housing to be available, particularly projects like this. I would think, if the plans are done right, that there will be full funding, you know, maybe a partnership with some of the other nonprofit entities or something out there. I wouldn't be concerned that it would take taxpayer money to do a project like this if, you know, because there's a lot of, there's federal money, there's state money, there's...
A lot of the federal money comes with strings attached. Like I mentioned, we know you from the national parks. We were hopeful of the town, it's going to be of a huge help. They wanted to keep both staircases. They wanted to keep the gymnasium. They wanted to keep the auditorium and the open space downstairs. You can't do a project like this, you can't make a building pay for itself with all that open space. And that's what... And that's what the experts are telling me. It's not from my personal experience.
Typically, typically these projects will have a mix of market-based pricing for apartments, subsidized pricing, you know, for lower income pricing. That's all, virtually all of them have an element of profit-making in this.
The location of... Next to the grade school and the experience that, and I'm going to get in trouble for saying this, that a lot of people have had with low-income housing, we're trying to avoid that.
You know, that'll make it a tougher road to go to try to get funding.
Yes, it does, and that's one of the drawbacks.
I mean, it's not, you know, there's various levels of that.
Yes.
All right, you work, I, you had your hand up originally for Brigham, but Brigham only in this one.
Okay. I have seen other projects, you know, come and go at Brigham and this is the closest we've ever been. And I want to thank Lance for his patience and following through on that.
I agree.
Thanks, bud.
I'm the director and I was just wondering who decided it would be housing?
Pardon?
Who decided Brigham Academy would be...
We did a feasibility study that was part of the planning grant and discussed various configurations and we thought that this had the best chance of being, we, we want this to be a standalone, we don't want this to be a burden to the town. And there are several ways that we could have done that. There were people that wanted public use to be a larger part of it. They wanted community kitchens, community exercise areas and such. Right now, we are going to have an area that is for community use. It'll be, I don't know if you're familiar with the building, downstairs, there's a large, a large room with four steel columns in it. That is going to be kept as a community use area. So community events, it is feasible that community events could be held here. As I said, this is the planning stage, nothing is set in stone. That's why we're looking for your input on the 13th of May.
Yes?
Ginger, part of the feasibility study, was it looked at the increase in costs of fire and EMS to elderly housing?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I'll stand right up. Part of the feasibility study, was it discussed at all the increased costs in fire and EMS that elderly housing would bring?
I am not 100% sure. I, I'd have to go back and review the reports. I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to you. If I don't know, don't know the answer, I'm going to...
So Paul's in doubt? Go ahead, Paul.
Just wondered if we could change the subject, so I'll stay on this until we get out of here.
Are we done with all the Brigham discussion? All right?
You're free to contact me at home if you have further questions.
Excellent. Paul?
Okay. I'd like to speak to Franklin County Field Days. I'm sure many of you are aware, it's been in a lot of the press, that Franklin County Field Days is being pushed out of their swipe, hiding. Beta, who the representative, has moved in and the state owns the land, they're making the decisions. Beta, I think everybody's aware, is the electric airplane company. And so Beta is looking at setting up construction, we'll call it, site there near the airport. So it's leaving Field Days on a year-by-year basis. They did have a five-year contract with the state. Every five years to renew for use of the property. So it's really put the Field Days Committee in a financial strait. That's one of the requests that went to the select boards all across the county, Franklin County, for $5,000 from each community town to support moving the site and purchasing some land. That's backwards. It's very difficult to find land that would support the Field Days and it's very expensive. If I can pull the tears back, Field Days has been a big, big part of agriculture.
Thank you.
Here in Franklin County and there's all kinds of Field Days sites across the state. If you folks can get by all the black smoke and pickups and the demolition derby that happens there and look at the premiere of agriculture that is shown there every year from dairy to sugar makers to your backyard gardens and the one that's near and dear here is those kids that are showing their heifers there through the 4H and the open show program. So we, we got committed this year, we're doing it again. It's a year-to-year basis, but it, it looks really tough. If we have to move, all those buildings are going to have to go with it. That's a huge cost. So we're just in really not knowing where we're going to go. But I just wanted to inform folks that that's what's happening and we just hope that that Field Days Committee can stay with it to get, find some land and, and get situated. It's the only Field Days site in the state that doesn't own their own land. So that's something to, to keep in mind, but just wanted to let everybody know and thank you for...
How many acres should be?
At that site, Lance, there's, if you go way out back, there's probably 75 acres there. They're looking for equal size, if not a little more. But the soil type is the big one. And Addison County Field Days, these Field Days went through unbelievable moisture this year and arcing was a nightmare.
Clay, though.
Yes, bingo. So they're trying to find the proper soil type and stay reasonably around the interstate to have good access for the public.
Kathy?
So are they looking to probably purchase that land from the state or is that going to be for that day?
It's not an option.
From the state, it's outside.
Anyone else on Field Days discussion? Secretary?
No.
No discussion, anyone else? All right, any other topics on your Article 19? Yes, sir.
I'm Patrick Evans. I know I'm addressing a crowd who would like to be in a closed room without much predilection, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Vermont, the Bakersfield Conservation Commission, which is totally opposed to those sorts of things. We are in charge and we have taken over the running of the, what we own. We take care of the town park just beyond the big sort of town park sign. It includes the old carriage house, carriage barn. We also run trails to town, the Great Shatt Mountain Trail, if you haven't been there, it's wonderful. We maintain it, it's on private land, but we keep, keep it up and running. And I wanted to speak to you about a couple of items that are very dear to our hearts. You can see that we've given out a pamphlet today about a conservation fund. And what this would allow us to do would be to have a, basically a bankroll, a bank account in pursuit of, of other lands, other properties, easements, things that we need to spend. And we, we have a dream, we have park, we have trails, we have a dream of a town forest, which would be open for recreation for the enjoyment of the town. Many, a number of towns in the county have one and have done very well by them. So the conservation fund, if it were enacted, it's not being voted on today, reserve, reserve conservation fund, would allow us to have the money to apply for grants. As you can see, we read the pamphlet, that other towns have had a bank account and have multiplied the amount of their bank account by when they applied for grants for help for acquiring land easements, town forests, parks, et cetera, et cetera. Backdoor Park, not the common, which is the large area in front of the cemetery, but the park just beyond, which also has a trail connecting and loops around. If you haven't tried it, it's great. We have two projects over there of significance, one of which is we're trying to keep the carriage barn alive. It's not falling down, it's not being condemned, but it's, as you can see, it's old, it hasn't been maintained. So we applied for a grant thanks to Alice and Michelle Evans, my wife, and it was denied unfortunately, but we're still going to keep going to try and keep that building in our town and alive. We're even thinking about, keep this in mind for a dull day, we have nothing to do, of doing a little minimal on our own, painting it perhaps so it looks better, using it for farm market, something like that, or any other project. Already we have concerts there, so I'm getting carried away and talking too much about it on this beautiful day. One other great project I want to talk about too is that we have a pollinator garden thanks to Carolyn Bronze, who's been our main motivating person there. And we're hoping to keep that going and to make it grow and break it up and maybe even create a pollinator trail throughout the town. On that regard, we're going to hand out some more literature for you, hopefully before you leave, about no mow May, which encourages you not to let your pastures go, but your lawns. If you can get through May without mowing them, it'll be a benefit primarily to pollinators, as you know, which are crashing insects that pollinate and keep us our food and what have you, or just not been doing well. So the no mow May idea is to help along, encourage those along with that pollinator garden, to encourage them. And there's other suggestions here, for instance, that make your life a little easier, you don't need to mow every week, you don't need to mow very closely, this will improve your life in many ways, including your aquifer as the water comes through deeper grass. We meet on Thursdays, every third Thursday at one o'clock. Love to have you join us. There are two or three positions that are open. Mary Lumbr- Lumbr, fairly recently deceased, was a member, she was our treasurer, she's on the cover, in the inside cover. We wanted her to be remembered. She's a local girl who lived and raised and died here sadly recently. She was a member of the Conservation Commission too. I think I've said everything I need to say and I'm sure you're glad to have.
Any discussion on the conservation mission? No, thank you so much.
Could you go over how that money is leveraged in the front? Do you have that in your pamphlet?
How is the, I like birds and bees and things like that leveraging is like, but as I, that's not the pamphlet, I think the idea is to get the money, you have to have some money.
Have to show that exponentially, exponentially grants.
Well, it's, the soil is clay.
It's all in the pamphlet.
When you get rain, it's, you get stuck, everybody's stuck down there.
A conservation group that has had a role to, that great force, they love community involvement and they like matching tons. So even a small, no, like Inisburg had something like $10,000 that leveraged more than $100,000 for their Island View Park. It's in other towns, it's all in this little pamphlet that we, I don't know if we have any more, but we can certainly get one. I think we passed on that.
We're at, we've predated 15, we have 15.
And this is for next year, we just want to let you all know that this is in our minds, this is going to be, we're going to be getting ready all through this coming year to get everything set up to hopefully establish this conservation reserve fund.
Thank you. Any other?
Quick question. Pat, is it your plan to expand your no mow May onto the common? Now that comes to me.
That's a good idea.
Well, the problem is you have a lot of ticks that go out there and play and with the higher grass, you get a problem with ticks.
Well, it's not going to, I, I live in the town here, you do too, and I don't know, I, I think I have no mow May in June before I have my grass mowed. We live on a gravel pit here and it doesn't grow fast.
And the dandelions duck when you put the mower over them.
Pollinators, those aren't dandelions.
Well, they survive.
We haven't talked about the common as it now stands. We've been asked to kind of keep an eye on the common, help out, the Conservation Commission has, and so this is new to us and, but we haven't even discussed it, to tell you the truth. We're going to no mow May the park on the other side, I think, you know, so I'm towards.
Any other discussion? All right, let's, thank you. Any other discussion for Article 19?
I would just like to thank everybody who's been involved in anything for the town. There are volunteers and there are people who hold offices, which nobody's paid much for doing what we do, so basically volunteering for that as well. But I'd also like to indict the young folk to please be part of it. The comment was made by Jim, I believe, about how if you look around, people that are involved in a lot of these projects and offices are older and we don't have a lot of commitment from the younger folk, for the younger generation, and we need that. We need their input. Times are changing and us old folk, we kind of get stuck in our ways sometimes and we don't recognize that things are changing around us and we need a fresher, newer outlook. I'd also like to bring out the fact that, I, a lot of you are aware, that we've had trouble filling the office of treasurer. And in between all this trouble, one person keeps rising to the top. And she has saved us many times. And I'd like to applaud her for very... That's about all I got, folks.
Okay, Kathy?
If anybody did not get their glasses for the eclipse, see Tammy on your way out. If you have children in the school, I believe they will be getting theirs from the school because they ordered several hundred also.
And once again, Kathy, when's the eclipse?
April 8th.
There we go. Anything on the eclipse?
Don't ask me the time, I don't know.
Any other ideas for discussion? Yes, sir?
I just want to say, not to, not to keep this meeting, the end of the meeting bleak, but that's where I'm, talking about filling positions and recruitment and all this other stuff, I want to just mention on behalf of the Bakersfield Volunteer Fire Department First Response, that if there's anybody in this community who has got a passion for fire or for anything else or EMS, stop by, see the fire department. We meet on every Tuesday evening, we're there at seven o'clock. Our roster is, is dwindling, unfortunately, slowly. And just like you see in this room, also, our department is, is an aging population as well. Because I am close to the youngest and I'm 38, so. So if you have kids, grandkids, whatever, and are interested in being a junior program as well, that are 15 years old, we bring them in as junior. We got a junior cadet member right now, she's awesome. She's fired for fire, as, as pun intended. And, you know, that's what we're looking for, is that younger generation to come in because again, we need the younger generation to keep that going so that we can continue to offer the services that we offer to this community.
Thank you, sir. Kathy?
I have a question, Travis. How young for that junior program, girl? How young?
15.
Have you reached out to the high schools and even the eighth graders or higher?
Yes, absolutely. We do a fire education program every, during Fire Prevention Month in October, we go in and we, we do the entire, the entire school, so we've been doing that continuously pretty much every year. So we keep that as our recruitment effort. And then in the tech centers, there's also EMS and fire programs. BFA unfortunately, I think, has closed down. They were one of the real pushers of the fire program and unfortunately, I believe that that fire program has unfortunately not been able to continue. So it's really, really difficult and the tech centers can get that. I think as, as a state effort within the Fire Academy, they would like to see that try to continue. One of the, the hard difficulties is understate and the Fire Academy, you can't really do live fire training or technical with them until they're 18 years old, which obviously... live fire training or technical with them until they're eighteen years old, which obviously the high school programs and the tech centers, that isn't really whatever. So they get them through all the program, and then they can't really do any of the practical stuff because they can't do any of that fire stuff.
Do you have like a group set up, like when we do our Fourth of July celebration?
Yes, we try to be...
Can that draw people?
We try to be out there. Obviously, we're kind of the ones who are kind of run that now as the fire department. So we try to get, again, out there on a recruitment effort. Again, you see us, the community events, we do an open house. We're trying to do, again, kind of those potentially on a two-year basis. State did a big recruitment effort last May where we did an open house, which unfortunately didn't really give us any recruitment. We tried to be out there, we tried to be open. It is what it is. But like I said, we're really looking for the community to obviously be able to help us, to be able to build that roster backup.
Thank you, Robert.
We also, I just want to quickly, we offer CPR and AED training as well, as well as there's two of us, myself and Ginger, who are car seat technicians. So if you have children or infants that need or that you would like to have your car seat inspected, reach out. We do have a website, bbfbbt.org, and all the information is on that website.
Thank you. Ginger?
Just that we do have a safety day usually early September over at the school, has not been largely attended by our community. We'd like for everybody to know what we do and how we do it. And I was also going to touch on the CPR, car seats. And remember, Bakersfield provides all these services for free. Nobody gets a dime for what we do.
Anything else on the fire department? No? Go ahead.
This is not fire department, but I think you all noticed that we're having a pie sale out here for the church. And the proceeds for our pie sales are going to be going, putting a lift into the church so that people that are handicapped can access our downstairs, which has a meeting room and kitchen, which we would like to invite the community to use. If you have a small party, it's not huge, probably forty people, and those kinds of things, we would love to see the building be used. Don't feel that it has to be a church event, it does not. Just an event where you need a space, we are over there. And if there are any people here who are justice of the peace, I'd also like to invite you, if you have people getting married and don't have a vacation. We, as happened, my husband got a call, and I said, "We've got a nice church over here, all decorated. It's not a religious event, but it's a beautiful space if you'd like to use it." So you're all welcome. It is a community building, and we would love to see it used, so... Oh, and there's pie out here, but sliced. You get a quart of pie if you'd like, or you could buy the whole pie.
Anyone else? Anyone else on any other subject?
We should add that the Historical Society also has public space available for people that want to use that. And it's a pool.
The form is on our website.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just... I live on Velvet and Mountain Road up here. I just wanted the town to give us a few loads of gravel here. They don't... They don't put a stone on that road. There's a lot of tax payers on that road. And nobody maintains that road but me. And of course, getting money from everybody up there is kind of like...
Class three, class four section.
What's that?
On the class three section.
Yeah. You don't have to spread it, just if they trucked a few loads of gravel up there, I'll spread it. I don't want to do the work. It's just that I don't... I'm sick of paying for it all the time. And we pay a lot of taxes up there, you know? The town hasn't given us one stone on that road.
We'll talk to Matt, see what's happening.
Appreciate it if you'd like to do that.
In nineteen, you've got a whole new road.
Uh-huh.
In nineteen, you've got a whole new road.
Yeah, I did the work. And I didn't get any money for that.
Well, you're talking about the class four section.
When it washed out up there. I mean, it washed out five feet deep. And I had to get an excavator up there, I paid for all of it, and I got no help from nobody.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we close the county meeting for today.
Okay, I have a motion to... I have a second. For all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And again, say nay. Thank you, everyone, for coming and participating. That meeting day, twenty twenty-four.